December 12, 2016 Board of Education Meeting to Order. First order of business is approval of agenda.
Move approve the agenda?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item of business is the special recognition of students, staff and community partners. First is the FFA East Central District and State Job Interview Contest Competitors with Abby Wiggins, Agricultural Education Teacher and FFA Advisor, Free State High School.
Good evening, I would like to introduce to you Blake Wagner and Delaney Stone are President and Vice President of the Lawrence Free State FFA Chapter. FFA, if you don't know, is a high school youth organization that develops community leaders and community servants that have a general interest in agriculture. And one of the items that we do in FFA is we do career development events. And recently Blake and Delaney competed in the East Central District Career Development Event Job Interview. They had to prepare a cover letter, resume, prepare, go through two very rigorous interviews, complete a job application and a follow-up correspondence. And so Blake actually placed second in the contest and he will move on to the state competition where he'll be one of 15 competitors. And if he wins the state contest, he'll move on to the national contest in October. So we are very and are very extremely proud of these two.
And next we have the 2016 Fall Class Act Award winner Larry Fish, Pinckney Head Custodian with Kyle Hayden Superintendent.
So Mr. Fish is here. We've recognized Larry Fish, our elementary, Pinckney Elementary School's Head Custodian with our Fall Class Act Award during our school assembly this last week. Our partners, our partners with Trudy Credit Union presented him with a $200 check. Principal Christie Hill, who's in the audience here, nominated Larry for his hard work and dedication to Pinckney. Larry's loved by his students, which was very apparent to me when I went to present Larry with the award. They know they can always count on him to do the job, maintain a positive, helpful attitude and get through any tough situation, which Pinckney has had its fair share over the course of this year. They have had a few challenges there, packed up and moved from the Pinckney Elementary School that's under construction right now, moved into East Heights. And we had some water damage issues in a portable, so they moved and packed up there and then moved into the school. And now they're setting new portables and so he's going to pack them up again and help move them into the new portals that might get set up there. But, and then come into May, they get to go back into a wonderful, actually probably about July, in the new Pinckney Elementary School, if we stay on schedule, right Tony? And, which will be a wonderful school, by the way, it'll be extraordinary. And so it'll help with that and get situated for the start of a new school year in 17, 18. But Larry, like I told you the other day, very deserving. I couldn't think of anybody better to give that award to right now. So Larry Fish.
Sorry, thank you. Next item of business is the President's Report. There's two main points that I want to talk to tonight.
We're going to talk tonight, we're going to get resolutions tonight, and that's why we're here. That's why we're here. Yeah, we can talk for it, we can talk first. No games. Y'all remember, glad y'all seen y'all seats when I got here, because the whole plan was from y'all walked in here, we was going to be in y'all seats, because y'all don't represent our kids. And if you have a nurse that say here and cry with us about Trump getting elected, and y'all say here and turn around and do that bitch ass vote, we are here and we demand respect. And you don't respect us. You ain't got no choice. And I'm mad, I've been waiting since Friday when I seen that article to step in here. And I'm here, I'm here, I'm here for my baby. So let's talk about our falsehoods. Mrs. Pinckney, Principal, I'm glad you're here. God made this work. I'm telling you.
And we have another question. What's in our kisses? What's in our kisses file? We want to know what's in our kisses file?
These, hang on, hang on. Calm down, calm down.
And we here, so call the police. You have the authorities been called, that's y'all's response?
Okay, so last time we were here, you were told to resign. We didn't ask and you were told. And you're all still here, so you all actually provided us with a pretty good list of reasons why you need to go.
Can we please do this during the comments?
No, we running this speed right now. Y'all even deserve it, be up there. We running this speed, and she's talking. Do not interrupt her no more.
So first of all, last week when you guys voted, you did not say what you were voting for outside of accepting his resignation. You did not explain to people watching at home and the people in this building that you accepted an agreement, a resignation summary agreement. Well, here it is. His current contract payments be honored through the end of his current contract.
So the man that you are going to continue to pay until May has been known to say that white people own black people. So also the man that will receive full benefits, including the, including continuation of his existing insurance coverage through the end of his current contract, has also said white people are genetically superior. There will be no reference. I can talk louder. Okay, there will be no reference to this investigation in his personal file. What the fuck? So white people are, white people are lighter because they're farther from the sun. He has also been said to say that. And I believe.
With his job, where he was posted in the paper.
Right.
When he was in Africa, he was posted in the sun. So that's where that came from.
Okay, there we go. So also, the district will only provide the following information to any prospective employer should he choose to apply for a teaching position with another school district in the future. So this man who's not only abusive, racist and sexually harassing.
The fact that every teacher has been funneling through the schools that they are in fear to have courageous conversations now, because that's what he was attempting to do. And that because of a homophobic slur, his response to a black student was 50 years ago, you were not considered human. I need that sentence to be talked about, because that's the sentence that man owned and y'all chit-chatting about. That's the sentence I need to be talked about. That's what I need to be talked about, that sentence. The sentence y'all know about, and still is going to let him go work with more children of color. That sentence. That sentence that y'all voted allow him to go work with more black children. You know when 50 years ago was? 1960. He just to tell our black children that 50 years ago they weren't considered a human? He didn't even talk about when they were enslavement. Considered a pre�ent of a human being, he took it back to 1960. That's a courageous conversation? That's a courageous conversation in Lawrence, Kansas? That's what you teaching your teachers? That's what they get, they get to say? Go ahead, I'm so sorry, because that sentence, the fact that every teacher's been talking about it and still think that is not merit enough to fire a teacher is a problem.
Right, so that sentence, that sentence that was said by a man who, when a future employer calls, you will say, yes, he worked for us, he worked here for this many years. We'll give you performance evaluations. And when you ask why he doesn't work with you any longer, you're going to say he voluntarily resigned.
While we're promoting, encouraging and endorsing a man to work with our children who believes that way, every single one of y'all voted to allow him to continue to work with our children. Seven to zero. And then the newspapers are confused with what's been said, because you guys are further protecting him? And you didn't have to? You didn't have to. And like I said, if that article wouldn't came out, well, everyone was just going to say what y'all did. Y'all did bad by us, okay, thankfully. Let's be honest, if he was black and it was the other way around, it would have been none. That he would have been out the door immediately, immediately. And the fact that after the teacher, after the teacher got interviewed by the principal, he was able to come back to the class knowing the students had already reported him and told the students to write a report about respect. And are you smiling because she just came and told you LPD was coming? Because guess what? I get so fucked about LPD. Somebody fucking smiling. And you got this bitch over here that's on the iPad.
You have a second? You have a motion for adjournment?
We adjourn the meeting.
Were you not eating?
Call in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
We don't care about you. Close this motherfucking damn, and we're here. And do it for the best part.